So, let's call this meeting to order at 6:07. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston will be marked absent. Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Patel?
Here.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Here.
Chair Feng?
Here.
As a reminder, if any members of the public would like to speak tonight, please fill out a blue speaker's card and turn it into the deputy clerk here, Jessica, or Mrs. Cooper, one or the other. I'm still trying to remember that for you. And will everybody please rise for the Pledge of Legions? You want to start, Larry?
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice. Thank you.
Moving on to item three, public comments. Any members of the public may address the commission on items within the commission's subject matter that are not listed in the regular agendas. However, please note that there will be no actions taken on the public comment section tonight, only on the agenda items. And with that, has there been anybody that submitted any comment cards for a public comment?
No.
Okay. Moving on to item four, additions and deletions to the agenda. Is there any changes from staff?
No, sir.
Okay. Commissions?
Oh.
Cool. Let's move on. Oh, I'll put this gavel here. I don't want a gavel. Okay, so... Moving on to consent calendar. Any changes there from staff? Commission? No? Members of the public? No changes? Okay. All right, and can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Chair Feng?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
Moving on to public hearings. At this time, we're going to conduct two public hearings on two agenda items. If you'd like to speak about the agenda items, please submit your comment cards right now and we will call you up once we open that section of the meeting. And with that, Eric, presentation, please.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, your first item is a conditional use permit to allow onsite retail sales in our, one of our industrial zones by the company called Comar Distribution. The planner for that project is Melinda Lim and I will let her make the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Norris. Tonight I will be presenting a conditional use permit to allow retail sales of apparel at the Comar Distribution warehouse. So, the warehouse is outlined in red. It is east of the Chevron Retail Center, which is outlined in blue, and is west of the I-15 freeway. The retail store will be open to the public from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on weekdays and close an hour earlier on weekends. There will be three employees on duty at all times and the applicant estimates that there will be three to four customers at any given time. When staff was reviewing the project, we had some concerns. The first is the retail and warehouse traffic. The way the building is operating now, there are two entrances to the site. To deal with this issue, let's look at why it's safe. So, what you're seeing here is the west entrance, which is dedicated for retail use only, and it has two sets of gates. There is a yellow screen gate for the general parking lot and the other is a truck access gate that's in black in the back. Both are currently kept closed at all times and the yellow bar gate will only be open during retail business hours. Here is a closer view of the proposed retail store entrance. We'll talk about the sign that you see here on the next slide. The signage is posted on both sides of the western driveway and it informs drivers not to, truck drivers not to enter the driveway and to use the east entrance for shipping The east entrance is for employees and truck access only and it has two gates as well. Both gates are open only during business hours. As you can see, there is a sign stating "shipping and receiving" to inform truck drivers to enter and use that driveway. That sign is posted on both sides of the driveway and so truck drivers which are, who are heading west and east are notified where to enter. This just illustrates that a southern truck is leaving from the east entrance in the employee parking lot. So, from past meetings commissioners, you had concerns about commercial uses within industrial areas. Therefore, staff had a concern about the conversion of a warehouse into retail. The retail store will be located on the west end of the warehouse building. The area outlined in red is the proposed retail space and it is 3,658 square feet, which is just 1 percent of the entire warehouse building. Based on this, we did not see a concern since the change is minimal. The final concern staff had was the introduction of retail traffic on Riverside Drive. We wanted to consider the safety of retail customers entering the site and leaving on Riverside Drive, a street which is mostly used for industrial purposes. Public Works has reviewed the site distances and determined that it was safe. Conditions staff proposed for this project are that the retail is limited to 3,685 square feet of the warehouse, that the dri, the west driveway is for retail use only, no semi-trucks may use that entrance, that signs are, signs identifying customer parking and stating no truck access are posted in the west parking lot, and that no outside merchandise shall be sold at the retail store. The proposed project does not involve physical changes to the exterior of the building necessary to support the retail store. Therefore, the proposed CUP is exempt under CEQA. Staff recommends that the commissioners approve this project and staff is prepared to answer any questions from the commission and the applicant is here as well to answer any questions.
Thank you, Melinda. Well, we can reserve questions for later. Open a public comment for this item. Does the applicant have any presentations or would like to speak? Oh, I mean, it's, yeah, it's, it's up to you. It's sort of...
I'll take one minute.
Okay, yeah. You're more than welcome to speak, so...
So, I've run a distribution center before that had this exact same thing in it and that was for Oakley Eyewear. And at that time, it was on Milliken and about Francis. A little smaller building, about 5,000 square feet was dedicated to retail space, but it was a distribution center and we just carved out the front section facing the building. So, done successfully before. There are several others. New Balance has a very successful building on 4th Street. I'm trying to remember, one of the major auto parts stores. I don't know if that was supplied as well, but there are, there are several others, including the other one with Napa Auto Parts and then another major one is Skechers. But that was about, uh, pretty good, but it's more or less valid. So, that's, you know, our recommendation and this would be limited to our apparel. We have a little bit of footwear and some accessories, minor things that we do, pajamas and clothing and that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. There any speaker cards?
No, sir.
No? Okay. Well, with that, I will close the public hearing on this section and open the commission up for discussion. Any questions? Commissioner Patel? No? Commissioner Lee?
Yeah. So, when we look at the map, if you want to bring that up, it's the aerial photo that we have. Just to, just out of curiosity, when I pass by Riverside, when I drive through Riverside Drive, there's a lot of trucks that are kind of idling and parked on the side. Just wondering, is it limited parking along Riverside? What do we have currently?
I don't think it's limited parking on Riverside Drive.
Riverside is pretty much industrial area, is truck traffic and at this point, yeah, we have to take a look at it and at this point now Riverside, you just go under the freeway and normally is not heavily traveled area except for truckings. And we have a couple of industrial buildings on the south side and they are pretty much self-sufficient in parking. So, your concern is the parking on the north side, on the westbound area?
No, it's just that, yeah, westbound.
On the westbound area?
Yeah, so I, you know, a few times I've driven out there, there's always like semi parked out there, just, you know, idling or, or parked and so forth. So, I, I was just wondering if we have limited parking there or is that something that happens usually? Do we take a look at that at all?
We have never received any complaint on truck parking in that area, Commissioner, but we're looking, we're willing to look into that and then report back to you.
Okay.
Commissioner Charleston?
I guess my only question is, when I, when we do a transition like this, it's very common, you're exactly right. I mean, this, a lot of manufacturers do this, but usually they do it when they first build the building. So, there's really a separation between the manufacturing part of the facility in the back versus where they're going to try to sell the retail stuff in the front. So, is there going to be enough of a dividing where the, the commercial action in the back won't cross with the retail? Because there is traffic there on that street and Commissioner Lee's right. I drive by there going to work almost every day and the semis do park there, Joe, I don't know why. I don't know if they're transitioning westbound and, or eastbound, I mean, and there's something that they need, that they can't get there in time because it opens up, but at 6:30, 7:00, 7:30 in the morning, they're there.
Particularly is that in front of this building, Commissioner? Or just at the, there is an unimproved area there between, it's like the junkyard there next door to that? Is that you're referring to?
If my recollection is correct, I think it's between Hamner and 15, just along Riverside Drive there. I mean, I didn't like look at exactly where those semis were parked, but it's, it's that stretch right there where the distribution center is.
The project in particular here, the subject of the discussion is the area, the red area? Next, which is west of that, I believe there is a junkyard there. There's, behind, you can see it from the freeway. And, and that area is not fully improved and developed. Might as well, the truck is parking along the frontage there. But again, we're going to take a look at it and then we see if there is any complaint. We're going to check that on our RSO, Sheriff's Department.
No, I mean, I think it's a great idea. I just want to make sure that we're blending the two together safe enough to where if cars are getting, coming in and out, that you have plenty of, and I know the city's probably, the, the staff has looked closely at how much parking you have to have depending on what kind of traffic you think you're going to entail, so...
All right, if we need to put a red curb out there, I mean, if that's needed, let's do that, yeah.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Oh, yeah, I have a few concerns. As we know, the CUP will run with the land and so I'm, I have no, no real concerns with what the re, what they're going to sell retail in this project, but maybe future projects. Is there any way that we could limit what is sold there or prohibit certain sales of certain items? I'm concerned about any cannabis products, firearms, ammunition, alcohol, spirits, anything like that.
Yeah, well, Mr. Chair and members of the commission, one of the conditions, as Mel mentioned, excuse me, limits them to selling only things that are in the warehouse. Our intent there was to sell the clothing that they're storing there. We could be more explicit and just say in the condition that they can only sell apparel and footwear. And then anybody who came in subsequent to this user who's storing a different kind of merchandise would have to come in, come back to the planning commission and amend the use permit for whatever that particular product was that they wanted to sell. And then the commission could decide at that time whether that new product was also okay for retail sales.
I think that would be prudent. Is applicant fine with that condition?
I'm hearing him say yes.
Okay. And I have another condition that I'd like to add. It might sound silly, but to prohibit live models in the store. I'm just looking ahead, maybe that might, something might happen with a future manager or owner or something, but no, prohibit live models in the store since they do sell sleepwear.
You will agree with that, sir.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind if our commissioners would agree with that.
Just to be prudent.
I'm good.
Agreed.
Oh, I, that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Actually, then, I have nothing left here. With that, so should we get a new motion now or just...
The chair could entertain a motion as recommended by staff with the amendments that Vice Chair Oblea has recommended.
Okay. So, we'll go ahead with that. Is there a motion for...
Also, another condition that after Public Works takes a look at it to see if the vehicle, vehicular traffic is safe or putting any conditions regarding red curb or, or things like that, if that's required, I would like to put those in there too. So, how do we condition that? And I mean, I trust that Joe will be able to kind of come up with the right solutions.
Commissioner Lee, what are you requesting for an additional condition?
No, so that we don't have any semis parked in front of it on Riverside Drive.
Would, would the applicant have control over that? I don't see how he could have control over that.
Well, yeah, Mr. Chair was just speaking with, with Joe Lindrawan. I, I think that's something that we would do. Public Works would go out there, make sure that the site distances are okay.
Right.
And if necessary, we would, we would put the red curving down, not the applicant. Is that right, Joe?
Yeah, we're going to look at that as part of Public Works.
Okay. Agreed.
Sounds good.
All righty, so is there a motion for Commissioner Oble, Vice Chair Oblea's additional conditions to the project?
I make a motion that we accept this with the additions of what Commissioner Oblea suggested. And was there anything else? That was it, right?
I second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Chair Feng?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Can I ask a quick question? I was just looking at your brands. What's your price point?
We sell to everyone. So, we sell from Walmart all the way up to Nordstrom and Bloomingdale's and stuff like that, so our price point range is from about $10. And it was a gift store, maybe outlet, so it's more like $7 to $25.
Okay. You have some nice brands, so good, good luck. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice addition.
Cool. Okay, moving on to item 6.2, project number PLN 17-20013. Eric, is there a presentation for this?
Mr. Chair, there is. So, I'm not Kanika Kith, I'm Eric Norris, but Kanika could not be here tonight, so I volunteered to make tonight's presentation. So, your second public hearing tonight, Mr. Chair and members of the commission, is what we call the Milliken or the South Milliken Distribution Center. We think of it as Hamner Avenue because it's the extension of our Hamner, but up north of the freeway turns into Milliken. The project involves several applications that all need to get approved in order for the project to occur. First is a general plan amendment from commercial retail to light industrial. And I'll just note that the commercial retail designation is a holdover that we inherited from the county on the corporation. There's also change of zone from the current scenic highway commercial to a medium manufacturing zone for one of the parcels. The other parcel already has that zoning on it, so this would just change it so the entire site has the same, the same MM zoning. And then finally, with those two in place, the applicant is proposing development of an approximately 276, 7,000 square foot warehouse building and 36 dock doors. So, we're actually just a little bit north and west of the site we're just looking at. So, the project site is here in red. So, again, this is the 15 freeway, the 60, this is Milliken here, that's the off-ramp from the freeway to get onto northbound Milliken. And north of the site is an existing warehouse building. East of it is the Jehovah's Witness facility. So, we'll talk about the general plan amendment and change of zone. So, again, the change is going from a retail designation on the site here to a light industrial designation. The other retail designation that we inherited from the county stays in place. That's basically, again, the Jehovah's Witness facility, so there's no need to change that and we didn't see any need to expand this application to include that site. Just why staff feels the applicant, or the application should be supported. As you know, we've historically been skeptical of other applications to convert retail into other uses in town. One of those that we denied eventually turned into our ESO marketplace. So, in this case, though, we didn't see the same things that made us make those recommendations on the other sites. We see a number of limitations here and we agree with the applicant that it makes more sense as a light industrial site. First of all, it has limited access and Kanika's pointed out in her slide a couple of the, the issues that limit access to the site. All along the southern border here is Caltrans right of way, so they're never going to get a driveway or any kind of access on the southern edge. They're not going to get access from the north. There's an Edison easement here, which again, limits access. So, the only place you can get into and out of the site is a fairly narrow stretch of frontage on Milliken Avenue. Enough for the kind of truck traffic that they're talking about, but really not in our estimation enough to provide the kind of access you'd need for a retail project here. Site is also not very visible. There's a lot of grade differentiation and so on. You're coming out from underneath the interchanges, you're coming west on the 60, so it's not a site, I mean, we put a star here so you can see where it is, but it's not a site that has great visibility. So, again, not something that we think a retail developer would want to develop a site on. And then surrounding land uses, the other applications that we've looked at in the past to convert from retail to something else have all been in the more residential areas of Eastville, where we're trying to look out for the future convenience of residents and provide commercial centers. In this case, we don't have those. This is basically in an entirely industrial area, so we didn't see the, the need to preserve that retail opportunity here. And then the change of zone is basically making the zoning consistent with the general plan, so again, that's something that we are suggesting approval of. Onto the major development review, which now just focuses on the look of the building. This is their site plan. There's basically, you know, as I mentioned, one entrance off of Milliken here. They had to come basically as far north as they could. They start to hit a slope up here, but we had to get as far away from the exit off the freeway. So, again, it was fairly limited in how they could design the site, but in gray is the building here. The trucks are going to come around the building. The applicant is here and he can tell you in more detail about how the op, how the building is going to operate, but it's a, a large building. Down here is the truck loading and an overflow parking area. Some of that is occurring in the Edison easement, which is okay as long as they're not providing required parking and not putting any structures down there. Highlighted on this slide and down here are some areas where due to some limitations, they're, they're going to screen the truck loading and parking areas with landscaping. There's some other areas that I believe Kanika's highlighted on some of the other slides where a slightly different treatment is proposed, but, but staff supports that. These are the architectural elevations, so, you know, as we always do, we worked with the applicant to make the building look nice and meet, you know, what we've tried to establish as an Eastville standard for our industrial areas. You see a lot of articulation on the buildings, a step above, we think, what has occurred under the county before, before we were here. So, here's an aerial view of the site, again, looking to the south. So, we're talking about this area in here, right down here in the bottom corner, this is the Jehovah's, the corner of the Jehovah's Witness facility and this is the part of the truck parking for the J.W. Mitchell site to the north of it. And this is what the building will look like once it's built. So, this shows a screening on the west end and again, what you're seeing here is the use of trees to screen the, the truck parking areas here. This is mainly an issue for folks who are getting off the freeway on that off-ramp. If they look off to their, to the right-hand side, they'll see the landscaping rather than the trucks. On the east end, not as much screening, but, you know, as we're pointing out in this slide, there's, you're looking through the freeway interchange. It's not highly visible, so we didn't see a need to do that. And again, the limitation there is that we're now in that Edison easement and it's more difficult to place landscaping there. Now, pedestrian access was something that we were concerned about. Anytime you have truck traffic and pedestrians, we try to make sure that they're dealt with safely. So, what we ended up doing here is because they do have a parking area over here, which is separated from the main building, or from the building rather, and the rest of the parking by the truck route or the, the truck access road. There, we've required them to install fencing here and we've limited that cross access to one place. So, there will be one clearly identified crosswalk with notification to the truckers and the pedestrians about each other being in the vicinity. So, again, we feel that that's a safe solution to get those folks who will be parking over here across that crosswalk safely without, without any issues. There is an employee break area, which is shown up here. So, that's the project. The paperwork part of that, part of it involves going through the CEQA process and the environmental analysis that was done. I'll give a high level and summary of that. Our environmental leader, Christine Donahue, is behind me, so she can answer any more detailed questions. But we prepared what's called a mitigated negative declaration that went through a public review period. Actually, it's still going through. It will be concluded by the time we go to the city council and they take action on this. So, you don't have the benefit of all the comments that came in, but the, the city council will. But what that document looked at was potential impacts in four different areas up here: biology, land use, transportation, and tribal cultural resources. There are mitigation measures in that document that identify how we can reduce all those impacts to a less insignificant level, which is why we didn't need to go to a full environmental impact report. So, maybe the most interesting impact out there is the biological impact. And this is where we ran into a federally endangered species called a Delhi sands flower-loving fly. And there's a picture of it there. It's about an inch long. It's, it's not a housefly. Because it's a federally endangered species, they had to do a two-year survey. So, two consecutive years between the months of July and September, they have to go out and look for the fly and make sure that it's not there so that we can say with certainty that we're not going to impact the species. They've been out there this, in 2017. They have to go back again in 2017. They have to go back again in 2018. So between July and September, they'll have to go back out again this year and make sure that the flies, again, aren't there. Now, if they do that second-year survey and they don't find the fly, the project just moves forward, and they can develop their building. But they'll need to wait until after September when that study is done. Now, if it is found, then it begins causing some other issues. Option number one, if they find the fly, it's now considered habitat, and they would have to set aside 75% of the site as habitat for that species. They could revise the warehouse building to fit onto that site, obviously it would become much smaller. They could also participate in offset mitigation. If that works, then they can proceed with the development of the full building that they're proposing. Christine's much more of an expert on that, so if you have any questions about how that would work. But it all hinges on whether they find that species when they go out again in the fall of this year. We sent 11 notices out to property owners, commercial tenants, and the adjacent cities of Ontario and Harupa Valley. I don't believe we've received any comments on the project as a result of that. So staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of all the actions, which again are a general plan amendment, a change of zone, and because we're doing this as a package, the major development review will go to the council, and we're recommending that the commission recommend the council approve that. So that concludes my presentation. I hope I did Kanika well, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Eric. I'm going to miss popcorn, too. Is she going to bring her popcorn around?
We're hoping to have both of them back here very soon.
Cool. Makes my day when I see that cute dog. Moving on to a public hearing, would the applicant like to speak or have a presentation?
My name is Jess, Newcastle Partners, and we are the applicants. And... So I will highlight a few things that, Eric, thank you very much, you did a nice job there. So again, we're going through and requesting approval for the city council, the general plan amendment, the change of zone, and major development review for our project. You know, it's, these projects anymore really take a village. I mean, it's a monumental effort getting here tonight, and I really appreciate everyone's help. It's, you know, there's quite a few team members on my side helping. It's taken us about a year to get to this point, so I'm happy to be able to do that. And just let me just do a quick commercial here on who we are. We're primarily an industrial developer-focused in Southern California, almost exclusively. A couple of our projects we've recently finished, Marine Distribution Center, that is out in Riverside County, that's a 600,000 square feet building that we built, Nevada Corporate Center in the County of San Bernardino, 300,000 square feet, and then just around the corner here, what we term Ontario Airport Distribution Center, 300,000 square feet building on Hellman. We've been in business since 1999, and we've built about 50 projects totaling 15 million square feet, with a value of about 1.1 billion. So we have headquarters in San Francisco, and then, as I mentioned, our work office here in... So again, just a perspective on our site there, highlighted kind of right dead center of this aerial, just to give a little broader perspective, that's about a three-mile radius, two, three miles there, you see that's Ontario Airport, just want to capture that in the aerial. You see how most, you know, 80% of that aerial is light industrial warehouse uses, and we're sort of right in the thick of it, part of our rationale for requesting the reasonable commercial zones like industrial. We are under contract. There are two parcels, one with a private party, and the other parcel, which in a slide that I'll show later, is a 3.3 acre parcel tucked right down the southeast corner there, virtually unusable, that's owned by the City of Norco, believe it or not. They're not even sure how they ended up acquiring it, but it's owned by the City of Norco with that MM zoning that Eric mentioned. The proposed GPA, the general plan amendment, would then, of course, correct the existing inconsistency between the city's language map and the city's zoning map, and as Eric mentioned, we were asked to change that zoning from commercial to light industrial. The proposed development also has been designed to comply with the city's development standards and is consistent with the development code and general plan. So again, I want to show just real quickly here, similar to what Eric has shown, starting off here with the Edison right, or excuse me, Caltrans right-of-way, again, impacting site development, and then animating here sort of the goal line. But one thing that I want to point out is the raised median that's on South Milliken, we collaborate with retail developers periodically on sites, and one of the things that they tell me consistently is you have to have full turning movements for retail to be viable. The only access to the site, again, as Eric mentioned, is off of Milliken going now north, excuse me, right in, right out only on Milliken. So there's no access coming south on Milliken. So as a consumer, if I'm looking to go, you know, buy groceries or fill up a gas, I cannot go left into the site heading south as I'm heading home in Eastvale. I'm going to go down, go to the right, it's a much easier movement, and of course, no signal there, as well. Again, just highlighting where the access point is, it's the furthest point north of the site, and a part of the reason is, showing up here, we have two power poles. Again, I'm biased in my opinion, because I'm an industrial developer, but you know, it's a site that really the highest and best use is industrial, it's just not a great retail site or commercial site. Again, just depicting the Edison easement that cuts right through the site, the easement, just to clarify something that Eric mentioned, we cannot park underneath it. We can only drive across it. We can't touch it, we can't landscape it. We will try to do some dust control with some three-quarter inch gravel and whatnot, but Edison's pretty strict, the document is very strict, as you can see here, next door, there's just absolutely no parking allowed. We've tried, somebody might just want to point that out. And then here, this highlights the Norco piece, and part of the issue here is it's landlocked, you can't even access the site. And then finally, there's another easement on the site, it's a storm drain easement, and then again, just that's how we ended up with the site. So you're really constrained with access easements, none of these are buildable, we can park in the purple easement there, that storm drain easement, there's a big car parking there, but that's the only area that we can park in. So what we've done here is sort of creatively, and it's not ideal, you know, as an industrial developer, I like right angles and I like rectangular sites, but I think we've done a pretty good job trying to design a building that works functionally, first of all, and then have adequate parking both for autos and trailer parking. And you can see over here what we did, again, not ideal, but we're going to take it on and park trailers on that 3.3 acre piece and make it viable. I'll just quickly go through these again, these are the same plans that you saw from Eric, just to propose the existing zoning, and then the proposed zoning to make it consistent with just the norm. And then again, the general plan amendment, the one from the red and the purple, consistent with the city of Eastvale zoning to the north on the J of the original site. And again, just kind of a clean site plan. Point out a couple of things here, you know, adequate parking, about 175 auto parking stalls. We've got more than 20% landscape down there at the bottom on the right. So one of the advantages from an aesthetic standpoint is that, you know, as an industrial developer, I try to push the coverage being minimized, parking, landscaping, et cetera, and the building bigger. But here, because of the site constraints, we can landscape a little bit more, and that's probably anywhere from 20 to 50% more landscaping than we typically have on an industrial building. So it'll be, it'll show nice once it's built. Again, same perspective looking south, it's off of Eric, and then just animating the building. This is, one of the things I want to point out is the, you have 316 degree articulation on the building, this is actually the back of the building, that you'll be driving around with trucks periodically, so you see there's articulation, vegetation, et cetera, on the backside of the building, and then hopping over, seeing the front of the building. Now this, these are renderings that I'm showing you, Eric actually showed you the building. We mimic this elevation, it's in the County of Riverside off of Harley Knocks. It really is a very nice looking building, and I'm not just saying that, the architects here, this is a building that I've asked them to duplicate a few times, and they're starting to get a little bit tired of it, but it is a very attractive building, and it does look like the rendering and stuff there. So if you manage any interest, it's on Harley Knocks in the County of Riverside off 215. I was just going to talk a little bit about our plan, in terms of, once the project's approved, we intend to move very quickly. It'll be a speculative development, in other words, we'll spend the money to do the construction drawings, prepare the permits, and go vertical without a tenant. The market demands these size of buildings, in this particular, the market's pretty good, the vacant area right now is about 3.7%, which is virtually no buildings available. There are quite a few users in the market looking for space like this, and we don't expect this building to sit vacant long. It's an intentional flying of hours, it's a long-term hold, and so what that means is then for a higher-quality tenant, it's not a flip project, it's something that'll hold at least 10, 15 years, and they will go for credit, they'll look for 450, 500 minutes, and so even if we had to delay leasing for a while, it'll bring, you know, the plan would be to win a high-quality user to this facility. And then finally, I just kind of wanted to wrap it up with some project benefits, some economics, some just aesthetics, but it's conceivable that this particular project could bring 167,500 employees to the city of Eastvale. Many of the general plan and changing the zoning, as mentioned, will provide land uses compatible surrounding area. The development will help complete and improve the roadway system, the sidewalks on Milliken, so we're going to connect the sidewalk and street improvements on our frontage and make that connection there. And just again, enhance the aesthetic appeal of the area, attract new employment, generate business in the city of Eastvale, reduce the need for members of the local workforce to commute outside of the area for employment, and then just a little more proper taxes, you know, let's sort of go back to the envelope, and we think that, you know, that property value and that tax base is going to be a little more meaningful. So, I, thank you for your zone.
Thank you. Thank you. And are there any comment cards, Jessica?
No, sir.
Okay. And with that, we'll close public hearing for this item. Is there any questions from the commission? Commissioner Patel?
I have just a couple. Thank you for coming. Do you generally hold an lease, or are you looking to sell this parcel? You kind of talked about a 10-year lease, but from a, do you see yourself more as just an equity partner and a VC coming in, developing it, or what's...
That's a great question. We are a partner with an insurance company. The plan is with them, they're building a portfolio of ESO plans, so it's a long-term hold for the ownership. So it's not a whole, it's not a flip, it's a lease, as it was alluding to earlier, the idea, because they want hold the long term, they want a new quality tenant when they lease that. So it'll be a leasehold, it will not be a set.
Okay. So is Newcastle acting more as the broker in this stand, or are they part of the ownership in Newcastle as well? Or are they just your client?
Newcastle is a separate entity from the insurance company. We're the developer, and the, we process the project, and that's what I do, for building and developing industrial buildings and industrial buildings. Our client or our capital, to be more specific, is an insurance company, and we're their partner, so we own it here.
Okay. That was, who's the owner? Because in some cases, when development comes to us, we're thinking one party's an owner, and then it ends up being somebody else. So this is basically, are they just your capital partners, or this is actually a partnership in the ownership of the property?
Yeah, that's an interesting thought.
Okay. And then my question was answered on the SEQA timing, because I thought it was only the 7th. So thank you. And then, thank you. My only other question I have for staff is on the zoning for the MM. Is there, if you can maybe just for the commission, share with us all the options for the MM Sorry. Just for commission to kind of, in changing of the zoning for the MM, which technically is a manufacturing medium, but if this is a distribution center, it's not manufacturing, so could you just share with us some additional insight?
Yeah. Well, as you mentioned, the MM zone is basically set up for light industrial uses. There are a handful of retail-type uses that are permitted there. You can do a restaurant there, you can do a nursery and a garden supply store, build a hardware store there if you wanted to, a hotel. But you're correct, and I think your basic idea is, if they, for some reason, decided not to put the building up, they've now got zoning that allows a different kind of use. So it allows building materials, sales yards, storage yards, feed and grain sales, several different kinds of laboratories, mini-storage, they can sort of mobile home, they can do a mobile home sales lot in an MM zone. So kind of interesting mix of uses. Most of this, frankly, we inherited from the county when we adopted the county's zoning code, but, so what's dropping out are more of that range of retail uses and replacing that with some of the more light industrial uses, including what they're proposing to build.
And I actually have one more question on the major development review.
Yes.
We're doing the 277 square footage. If for some reason it's not a one building for 277, and now they want it to be, you know, five different buildings at 50,000 a pop, do they need to come back for any in front of the plan commission or the city, because now you're dealing with different traffic issues, things like that?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, it's typical when we finally get the final construction plans in for them to be slightly different than what's seen here. What Commissioner Patel is describing, we would probably bring that back as an amendment. If they wanted to change minor features of the building, if it got slightly larger, slightly smaller, as long as they still met all the zoning code requirements, you'd generally handle that in plan check. But what you're describing would fundamentally change the application, and yes, that will come back to you.
Okay. Thank you. No other questions?
Commissioner Lee?
Yeah. Couple of questions. I guess, isn't it our, isn't it kind of a requirement to have two access? I understand the site is kind of funky and the configuration-wise, it's kind of impossible to provide two access, but I'm assuming, Joe, you were okay with that?
Yes, Commissioner Lee, this has been a challenge for us since we saw this site plan, because location is in such a way that on one side it has an Edison easement, the other side we have a freeway off-ramp, and the frontage on Milliken or Hamner is very, very short. So we struggled with that for a bit, but now, since the use of the unit is going to be light industrial, and we do anticipate that traffic is not going to be that high, truck traffic especially. If you look at the truck turning templates, looks like there is conflict in there. However, with the amount of traffic coming in and out, I think they can take turns to get in and out of the site. It is a challenge, and we tried to have the applicant talk to the property owner north of this site, which is, I believe, JW Mitchell of Milliken, it's on Milliken, Mission, and maybe it's kind of really a long shot for... It's on American Mission and, um, uh, maybe it's kind of really a long shot for them to be able to let them do that because, and then they have to go across hundred and fifty feet, two hundred and fifty feet, um, easement, SE easement, but it's gonna be another challenge, so. But, uh, upon looking at their, um, uh, traffic study and then the use of the, of the site, the building, um, we believe it is suitable for the one site, for the one access. Thank you.
Yeah. So, yeah, the, the, the property to the north, that, that was actually my next question, but you answered it, Joe. Um, the other question is I, um, have we gotten any comments from Ontario on this one? Because I, I believe Milliken interchange was one of those, um, interchanges that to be improved in the future very, um, very soon. So, I don't know if we had, if they have enough right-of-way, uh, Caltrans has right enough right-of-way for Milliken interchange improvements in the future. Uh, the, yeah.
Milliken.
Milliken and sixty.
Oh, Milliken and sixty?
Yeah.
I'm not aware of that. Um, we, we did talk to Caltrans about it and then, um, Christie Connors, District Director, uh, Assistant Director, um, um, didn't mention anything to me about it. It just looks like, yeah, it, they're outside of Cal, uh, right-of-way.
Okay.
Uh, I'm not aware of any interchange project in there, in the next five years at least. We've been meeting regularly with Christie Connors, uh, for any potential projects within the City of Eastvale and, and, uh, freeway right-of-ways. Yeah.
Okay.
And, and the one to just improve is Mission and, um, uh, interchange, um, Grace Operations.
Right.
Yeah, that was completed.
Okay. Okay. So, and we didn't hear anything back from Ontario on, on the interchange?
Um, Ontario was approached, I'm sure, and, uh, Ontario was, uh, Eric?
Yeah, we did route the application to Ontario and we did not get comments back from them.
Okay. Interesting. All right. Um, one more question, the MSACP and the conservation. Um, so there, is there any other conservation, um, easements or con- conservation land out here for the, um, the, the fly that's nearby? I mean, it's, it's, I feel, I feel like, um, like I was reading Karen, um, uh, Karen's email from, uh, US Fish and Wildlife that, um, she was concerned about it. Um, so I was just wondering what your take is on, on this one?
Yeah, so there is another nearby site, but they've not found any fly on it. There doesn't seem to be, in the, in the area, there does not seem to be any viable fly habitat in what they're calling the Ontario unit. So, um, there is viable lands further to the east in the, in the Fontana and the Harupa area, um, and, and that is, you know, that is a challenge with, even if, um, you know, is this site sufficient in size and, and scope to provide, you know, viable fly habitat? There's, there's a lot of doubt about that. So, um, to close the loop on that issue, uh, the service has, and the, uh, Resource Conservation Agency has requested, um, one more fly survey. Typically what you do is two years of protocol surveys. These surveys are done in the middle of summer. Um, that's when this species emerges, typically July, August, um, when we're all hiding and trying to get away from the heat, that's when they come out. Um, that's when they're looked for. So, they can only be looked for once a year, um, and it's a pretty short window of time. And, uh, the last survey, um, which were kind of ideal conditions for if, you know, if they were gonna be present, we probably would've seen them because we did have, um, historic rains previously that, that, you know, you can't say, you know, we're, we're in like the fifth year of a drought. It wasn't a drought year during the last survey, this last survey. So, we, uh, will know for sure on that issue, uh, coming up in the next six months, whether or not, when they do their second survey.
So, I guess hopefully they won't find anything, um, but, um, even if they do, is there enough, uh, off-site mitigation out there that credits that we can, that they can purchase?
So, what would happen at that point, um, the applicant would need to go back to, to, if, if there's fly found, they would need to go back to the service, back to the RCA and discuss their options. Um, the RCA did, um, indicate that off-site might be an option, uh, but they're not committing to that at this point. They basically are asking the applicant, follow the process, we want you to come back to you, we wanna talk to you about it some more. So, um, right now, we're kind of operating under the assumption there won't be fly, but there's, we've got contingencies in the document for if there is. There is a path potentially for the applicant to follow.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Charleston?
Well, Commissioner Lee stole my thunder, so, pretty much asked all of them. The only thing I know is, is the land bank over in Colton across the, it would be on the south side of the freeway, there was a couple hundred acres there. Is that full? Is it all taken already?
So...
For the fly?
Yeah, so, the RCA really wants to see conservation in the county. Uh, that area is in San Bernardino County and so that's why it's not really looked on favorably. They want to see, um, conservation done in a similar geography, similar area and definitely within the same county, within the same watershed, that kind of thing. So...
I wonder if the fly will be able to tell the difference. Between San Bernardino and Riverside, it's ten miles apart.
So, I, I don't really have comments on that, but, um, in the, in, in the absence of viable conservation lands in the vicinity and in the county, um, I, I think they'll have to at least discuss it.
Okay. I guess in my other comment, a, a long Commissioner Lee's is, if we don't have the two driveways, is the Edison easement, if there were some kind of weird emergency, would they be able to drive across the easement into that parking lot on the other side?
Oh, yeah. Um, in fact, they're planning to cross it with vehicles.
No, not cross it, drive to another piece of property that they don't own. If there were an emergency where they had to get off the property and that driveway were blocked?
To the east?
Could they drive to the?
To the east over into the?
To that other piece of property on the Edison easement? That, that's, as long as that exists for some kind of emergency, we should be fine. Thank you.
Vice Chair?
I have no questions.
Um, well, I just have a one comment and question. I, I know it's difficult to take on a project like this. Thank you. Um, it's, it's, you've probably been through hell and back for this. My question actually is, I forgot her name, I'm sorry.
Christine.
Christine, sorry, I'll remember that. Um, this project, uh, well, projects like this always reminds me of a solar project back, um, by the Nevada border. So, after they check and there's no flies there and they begin construction and they, the flies come back, what's the impact?
I really don't foresee flies coming back once you start ground disturbance, so...
Well, they thought that with the, with the tortoise too.
With the tortoise?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, well, so with the, I mean, they're, they're aerial species, you know, they, they fly, so, um, if they come back, I guess they would fly elsewhere. I don't really...
I mean, would that stop the project? I'm just concerned about delays. I mean, would, would that?
If the service was out there, they saw a fly during construction, they would probably halt the project.
Okay. Well, that's all I have. Um, is there a motion to approve project number PLN seventeen dash two zero zero one three as recommended?
I'll make the motion. Uh, I have a comment.
Oh.
Mr. Chair, are we gonna handle these, um, issues all in one lump or we gonna approve them one at a time?
We can do it with one motion, am I correct?
Yes, and I believe there's a motion on the floor.
Yes.
Doing all three at once.
I'll second that motion.
Voca?
I was gonna read the whole thing, but, okay.
You want me to read it?
No, no, that's okay. I think we're good, right?
We don't have to read it as long as it's in recommendation of what the, the Planning Department recommends?
Correct. If that's your motion, Commissioner Lee?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Vice Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Chair Fang?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Oh, uh-uh. I'm sorry, the, uh, public comments closed currently, but, um... Um, you're more than welcome to stay, um, and if you have any questions, maybe staff can address them, but... Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, but the public comment section is closed, so we have to follow procedure. I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Chair and for the audience member, this now goes on to the city council for another public hearing. So, sir, if, if you want to be heard in a public hearing, you'll have a chance at the city council. Uh, that'll be sometime in the month of March. We need to notice that hearing, but, uh, as a property owner, you'll get that notice and you can come and, uh, provide testimony to the council.
And with that, moving on to item seven, presentations. Um, any other separate additional presentations?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, staff report?
Um, not a whole lot. I, I can say we have an awful lot of projects in the pipeline, uh, and I'll just highlight, uh, one that I'm sure you've heard about, which is, uh, In-N-Out is formally now applied for. And, and for the benefit of the commission, we know there's excitement out there, uh, In-N-Out has to come to you and get approved first, so. It's not been approved yet, uh, but we're working on getting that to you as, as quickly as we can. Uh, a lot of the aesthetic issues have already been worked out, so, uh, but we'll get that to you as soon as we can. But rest assured, we did not forget about the planning commission. In-N-Out is applied for, but they're not approved yet. Um, a lot of other things going on, uh, so you'll see some really exciting applications coming in over the next few weeks, the next month or so, um, a lot of new commercial development, new light industrial development, um, really some exciting stuff. We sat down with the Goodman folks today. Uh, I can't tell you really any of what they said because it was all pending deals, but, uh, a lot of stuff happening in that project, really starting to fill in all the commercial areas, um, some very exciting stuff.
Mr. Chair?
Excuse me, excuse me, gentlemen? Um, I'm sorry, you're a bit loud. Could you step outside? Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Sorry.
Uh, the Ninety-Nine Cent Store, can you give us an update on that, please?
Yes. We actually met with them today, so, uh, as you recall, the, the commission approved a conditional use permit for alcohol sales there. At the last council meeting, the, uh, motion was made at the end of the meeting and voted, uh, in the affirmative to have that item go to the city council on appeal. So, the, the council appealed that themselves. So, that's currently scheduled to be heard by the council on March fourteenth. So, they'll be holding a new hearing on that same item and rendering their decision. So, your approval is pending, uh, held in abeyance, whatever the wording is, uh, until the council takes their final action. Uh, we did mention to them, and they're aware of your concerns about the progress of the project, uh, they did. So, you'll see probably at the next planning commission meeting in two weeks, a representative from Ninety-Nine Cent Store here to give a more complete presentation, but we were told today that they have worked out the fire-water issue, so they are now able to start bringing construction materials onto the site. So, they plan to pour the floor inside the building next week, then they can start putting a roof on the building, so you will see construction activity happening. The frontage improvements on Hamner, they submitted plans, we approved them, uh, in the midst of constructing that and Joe can, and it's talking more detail about this, uh, we determined that it was being constructed incorrectly, so they've revised their plans and resubmitted them. They're waiting to go through that plan check process and then they'll complete the frontage improvements on Hamner. So, you will see activity happening out there, at least on the store, probably either, well, they said they're out there working this week, I haven't been by there yet this week, but, uh, you will see the store now starting to take shape, so.
Thank you. Any, Joe?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioners, great to see you. It's been a long time.
I know, you're stranger to us.
Yeah, I know. So, uh, just to continue, Ninety-Nine Cent Store, um, they poured the curb and gutter, uh, too high, so, um, we approached the engineer, the contractor, and the developer themselves came in and say, yeah, it is just too high, so they're gonna remove the curb and gutter for a good portion of that and redesign that and, um, you know, readdress the, the elevation a little bit, so the corner, when they turn to slice, when it's going to be working, um, better. So, we're waiting for that. The plan was approved and it's not ha- uh, holding up any building or any, uh, construction that they have going on for the, for the store. I understand they plan to open in April. Have you heard that, Eric? That's what Mrs. Jessie Allen told us. Okay, yeah, that's what, that's what, uh, we heard from them, so I don't know, maybe that, that plan has, has changed now. I'm sure you heard Costco is coming to town, so, opening at the end of June, uh, June, and we've been working very well with them. We just issued a building permit last week. They're going to start the building, uh, pouring the footings and stuff, uh, the third week of, um, February, which started two weeks or so. And, uh, we're in the process of issuing a permit for the gas station and it's twenty-four pumps gas station. This is a much more, much, many more than the Chino Hill, Chino Hill has sixteen of them. I think Corona Beach has sixteen as well, so this is twenty-four. So, exciting, exciting area, exciting news. And, um, I just wanted to add a couple more things. City manager asked me to remind you that, um, the sixteenth, um, sorry, on the thirteenth, um, which is next week, we're gonna have a town hall meeting right here at six o'clock, sorry, six-thirty. Like to invite the Commissioners to come and, uh, attend the meeting. It's a quarterly meeting. And the other one is the next day is going to be a council meeting, but preceding the council meeting at five-thirty, we will have a, um, council workshop on goals and priorities. I think it says council study session at five-thirty, so an hour earlier. And in conjunction with that, we have a community priority snapshot. It's a short survey for the community, so I'd like to invite, um, Commissioners, as soon as you receive the en- notification and your emails and maybe share with your neighbors, your, um, constituents, if you can, um, participate in this. Let me just read this a little bit. We just got it from, um, our communication specialist, uh, earlier. It's a survey, of course, when I needed and the internet connection is slow. Basically, uh, the survey is going to be, um, I think it's right here. I apologize for this. There you go.
While Joe's getting that ready, let me just go really quickly over some...
Go ahead, Eric, yeah.
Do you have that, Joe?
I, I, I have it here. I have it here. Okay. I just read real quick here to you, Commissioners. Um, the City of Eastvale is currently evaluating future goals, priorities and objectives as we continue to grow as a city. As an Eastvale resident, so this is only for Eastvale resident, not from, you know, for Norco resident or Harupa Valley, your feedback is valued and considered when these decisions are made. We invite you to complete this short of questionnaires to help us better understand what the community needs are. This will be posted either tonight or tomorrow, just pending approval by city manager. So, just wanna share with you ahead of time, to give you a heads up. And there are a, a bunch of, um, uh, checkpoints that you can, you can check and you can also give your, um, um, inputs, police service, fire service, court enforcement, traffic, roadway infrastructure, employment opportunities, civic center, transparency and access, communication, community outreach and education, art and culture, school safety, environmental sustainability, roads and transportation projects, and many others you can add, and also residents can add as they feel is important for the city of the future. So, these are, um, the snapshots that, um, please participate and if, uh, there's some residents here who are still here, please participate as well and, and it's important for us, I know it's a short notice, uh, whatever days we have between now and the fourteenth, which is the council workshop, that's gonna be used as a groundwork, as a groundwork to be discussed at the council, uh, study sessions. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe, and, uh, just really quickly from our internal planning calendar, looking at some upcoming commission meetings. So, at your next meeting on the twenty-first, we'll have two items for you. One is, uh, a minor change to the neighborhood preservation section of the zoning code that the council asked us to work on, and that is to revise the current standard that says... the council asked us to work on, and that is to revise the current standard that says everybody's lawn has to be aesthetically consistent with everybody else's and replace that with a maintenance standard. So getting away from aesthetics and focusing on maintenance. The other item on that agenda will be the El Pueblo Loco Drive-Thru in the Esau Marketplace